I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of a previous meeting held on December 14th, 2022. Motion, Mrs. Ma Malido, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor? Five zero, yep, if you weren't here, that's fine. You're just approving the minutes of the meeting, not your presence at the meeting. All right, and Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to our commendations for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy, and thank you as always to the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to recognize some outstanding members of the Elwood community. Tonight, we have students, faculty, parents, and we are very pleased to recommend, to recognize and welcome Assemblyman Steve Stern. Assemblyman Stern has been a wonderful supporter of the Elwood School District and our students. For many years now, he has used his discretion that enables him to provide special funding to sponsor different projects and initiatives within the district. This is not something he has to do, it's something he chooses to do and something we greatly appreciate. So, in the last two years, Assemblyman Stern is singularly responsible for an additional $90,000 coming to the Elwood School District to support several initiatives that are helping us to enhance our security and surveillance system to make sure all of our students and staff are safe every day. So, the Board wanted to invite Assemblyman Stern here tonight to recognize him for his contributions to the district, and I'm sure Mr. Tommy will have some words as well.
I do, I think he summed up for the most part, some of his cert is staunch advocate for our students. Our community has been supportive from his years at the legislature up until being our current Assemblyman, and as Dr. Bossert mentioned, every penny counts in education. So, every dollar, every bullet grant, every piece that we get to put our puzzle together goes a long way. It's a benefit to our community, it's a benefit to our district. So, on behalf of the Board of Education and our community, we thank you for your continued service and dedication to our district. I know we're small among the map of many legislative districts, so we appreciate you're not forgetting about Elwood.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, we are also very pleased tonight to have a number of outstanding students and their families joining us. These are our PTA reflection winners. And to talk more about the program and present the awards to the student, I'd like to call upon our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction for at least two more meetings, Dr. Hull.
Is it raining? Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Bossert, our community. I have been given a very special task tonight. One of the most important things we can do is provide our students with a voice. And the reflections competition is such an important avenue for students to express their creativity. And we were very pleased this year to have so many students participating. The reflections program is brought to us through our wonderful PTA, and it is under the direction of Mrs. Muller, so we thank her very much and our PTA for all of their involvement. So, this evening, I'm going to be announcing our winners and the area in which they were selected. And I ask our students to please come up when your name is called and Dr. Bossert has something for you. So, to begin from Harley Avenue, I would like to welcome Kyle Clancy for Visual Arts. Also, from Harley Avenue, Mia Muller for Visual Arts. And from Boyd Intermediate School, Ella Colen-Gilly for Literature. Aria Pineda for Photography. Mia Gia Cologne for Visual Arts. Jolie Roman for Visual Arts. Jolie Roman. Okay. Next is Melina Leonidou for Literature from Elwood Middle School. Jewel Lee for Photography. Sophia Brown for Visual Arts. Julia Giordina for Visual Arts. And from John Glenn High School, Emily Yang for Visual Arts. And our other honoree who could not join us this evening is Brayden Clement for Photography. So, a big congratulations to our reflections winners. And we wish you much luck as your work will now go forward to the next level with Suffolk County.
So, we have one other group left to commend this evening, and again, thank you to the Board for allowing the opportunity to do this. The truth of the matter is, these groups could be thanked each meeting each month because their contributions to the school district are without limit. We were able to invite four outstanding parent leaders in the district to be recognized tonight, but it's important to note that they're representative of a much larger group of parent volunteers. I have been blessed now to be in the Elwood School District for seven years, and having worked in other places, I can tell you that the level of commitment and support of our parenting organizations is without match. The amount of time, effort, energy, compassion, and care that our parent groups put into supporting our schools in any capacity that they can is really heartwarming. Any request that is made from teachers, from administrators, is met. No matter the task, whether it's can you please maybe put together breakfast for 450 people? Or can you help find some funding, the scoreboard stopped working in the middle of football season? No matter what the task is, we ask the question and the answer is always yes. It's a wonderful group, and we asked them to be represented tonight by some of the leaders, but it's inclusive of all the parents who have taken time to volunteer for PTA events, for booster events, for music boosters, certainly SEPTA. There is wonderful work happening every day and contributions being made to our students every day because of the work of these individuals. It takes a village, and we could not meet with the level of success that we do for our students without the support of these parents and these groups. So, the Board has given us the opportunity to recognize them tonight, and I would like to call upon some of those leaders to be recognized. We have our Elwood Booster Club President, Ms. Lisa Pallesi is here tonight. Thank you. Our Elwood PTA Council President, Ms. Agapi Bell is here this evening. Unfortunately, the President of the Elwood Music Sponsors, Kim Rourke, is not here tonight, but she certainly sends her regrets and appreciations for the partnership. I'd like to offer a round of applause to Mrs. Rourke. And finally, our Elwood SEPTA President, new to the role but making immediate contributions, Ms. Marlene Castanza. Thank you once again on behalf of the entirety of the administration for always answering the call and doing everything you can to support our schools.
I just wanted to say a quick word. Having been PTA President for multiple, multiple buildings, class parents, volunteering for organizations, I just want to extend my sincere gratitude for everything that all of you do. It's a true partnership with the district. We cannot do this without you guys. You motivate, you encourage, you organize, and at the end of the day, the kids receive the biggest benefit from it. I just want to give a special thanks to Lisa. I used to be the Booster Club President on one long night out. I somehow convinced her to take over my role once I got elected to the Board, so, you know, it was a conflict for me. And I may have said it was not as much work as it really is, but she took it on, she took it with grace, and you really did me proud. So, thank you all, you guys are rock stars.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to congratulate all of our students and all of their great awards, and to our parent organization leaders, we thank you as always for your continued support of the students, of everything, of our initiatives that come forward from the teachers, as Dr. Bossert said, does take a village, we have a great one. I will also use this opportunity as a shameless plug. There is a SEPTA fundraiser on January 27th. 27th, it is the 10th Annual SEPTA Bowling Event. It is a wonderful night to support SEPTA, great baskets fundraising, just a fun night out. So, if you're not doing anything, Marlene has it all over Facebook as she's picked up the role. She's rocking at it, so great job and look forward.
And Mr. Tommy, if I may, before we dismiss the troops, while we have a full house, there's one item I would love to do, not exactly commendations, but one additional item.
Sure.
Tonight, we have someone who will become very familiar to the Elwood School community joining us in attendance, and she has some special guests with her, it seems. The community is by now well aware that Dr. Hull will be retiring at the end of January, and after a months-long exhaustive search to find the most qualified and best replacement to serve as our new Assistant Superintendent of Schools, the Board unanimously appointed Dr. Sonia Hood to take on that charge role within our district, and Sonia is here tonight with members of her family. Welcome Sonia. For those who are not aware, Sonia comes to us via the Rockville Center School District, where she currently serves as a K-12 Director of Curriculum Instruction, after having spent many, many years in the Hempstead School District, serving as International Baccalaureate Director, Assistant Principal, Curriculum Writer, and certainly a teacher. She has her doctorate from St. John's University and degrees in Social Work Psychology, and she was an adjunct professor in, at Malloy College. In her spare time, she managed to publish some work regarding instruction for gifted learners. Throughout the process, when we had the very difficult task of finding the best person to follow, someone who has made a large mark in the Elwood School District, with every meeting, with every conversation, Sonia rose to the top of the list as someone who we were very excited to welcome to the Elwood family. She has spent some time with us over the last two weeks. She managed to tour all of the buildings on January the 4th, and the thing that impressed me most about that is education is a small world. So, I had emailed the teachers and staff that I would be touring the buildings with Dr. Hood, and so many teachers took the opportunity to come out of their classrooms, greet her, and say, hey, I know so-and-so who worked with you here. And in each of those exchanges, the remarks made about Dr. Hood and her leadership in other places and the mark she has made in her previous positions was noteworthy. They were very, very pleased to meet her, and we are very pleased to welcome her to Elwood. So, Sonia, do you have some words you would like to share? I am going to ask you to go to the microphone or those watching from home. The thousands watching from their homes will not hear you without the microphone.
No pressure, no pressure. Well, first off, I would like to say good evening to the students that are here or streaming through at home. Good evening to the Board of Education, District Administrators, Building Administrators, Teachers, Staff, and Community Members that are present. I would like to first give a heartfelt thanks to the entire school community. It has been such a pleasure getting to know the Elwood School Family. And it is, it can be challenging transitioning from one role to the next. And the collective support that I have been shown has made the transition as seamlessly as humanly possible. So, for that, I am deeply appreciative, and I think that that is a testament to the level of collaborative spirit and inclusivity that the district represents. So, thank you, thank you so, so much. I have to also give a special thank you to Dr. Bossert as well as Dr. Hull for making time in their schedule to facilitate and navigate a tour, as Dr. Bossert mentioned, through all of the school buildings. So, it was a chance for me to get to meet people a little more, the staff a little more intimately, and get a preview of instruction in real time. So, I'm just so thankful for that. Thank you to my family who's here, and they support, they're very supportive, came out with me in this horrible weather. And they serve as a reminder to find balance in everything that we do. I also want to give a special thank you to Jonathan, the first grader at Harley that I met touring the buildings, who gave me a fist bump and promised to be my new friend. He serves as a reminder of our purpose and our why behind the decisions and the actions that we take on a day-to-day basis that impact students. It also reminds us that we have the honor and privilege of waking up every day to do something that we love, and I do not take that for granted. It is much more than simply a career path, but a calling to positively impact and enrich the lives of all of our learners. To that end, our plan of educating students must align with the individual needs of our students. Our collective why derives from the understanding that the world's most valuable and precious resource is not a mineral or oil, it is our children, it is our students who look up to us to equip them with the essential tools that will help guide them through their lives trajectory. They are looking for us to prepare them for life and and beyond, the K-12 experience. When we envision the portrait of an Elwood graduate, we must include the academic competencies, the knowledge, skills, and dispositions that we expect them to acquire, married with the executive functioning skills such as problem solving, the ability to think critically, to self-regulate, or engage in productive discourse. We want to foster knowledgeable, empowered, and resilient effectuators. And in light of the recent findings from the World Economic Forum, 65% of the students that are currently in our schools and our district or entering in our schools, we're preparing for jobs that do not already exist. So, we must answer the call intentionally and purposefully, and I am ready to answer that challenge. It is the why that drives my unwavering commitment to excellence in teaching and learning by placing students at the center of every instructional decision I make. You noticed I said good evening first to the students. No disrespect to the Board of Education, but I am here to serve the students. So, whether it is implementing programming, coordinating professional learning, or developing systems and structures that are aligned to support the whole child, we must collectively work together so that we do not fail them. So, I am honored, so honored, to stand here before you to become a part of the Elwood family, and I am elated to serve as your next Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. In a short time, a relatively short time, I have come to know the, known the Elwood School District as a warm and nurturing environment. And that has provided a climate where students are obviously thriving and excelling. I eagerly look forward to collaborating with Dr. Bossert and the dynamic team of educators that are here, progressive and forward-minded, as well as partnering with parents and families to cultivate new opportunities for continued growth and sustained excellence. And I think that my friend Jonathan and the rest of the student body deserves nothing less. Thank you so much. That's a smart man right there.
Okay, so, the students that are here tonight, we know you have lots of studying and homework to catch up on, and tomorrow is an early start to your Friday, so if you would like to depart at this time, we will not be offended. Unless you'd like to hear more about the district's budget, then you may stay. Thank you. Thank you, parents. Thank you, Kathy.
All right, Dr. Bossert, that brings us-
Bye, myanisa. Sorry.
It's all good. Dr. Bossert, we are up to your superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay. Sorry? Yes, we'll skip the first item, we've already covered that. Tonight, the Board of Education asked me to prepare a brief update regarding the status of our universal pre-kindergarten program, and I'm pleased to do that as all of the news is positive and good. Just by a matter of refresher, last year, the district had its first initiative with UPK, and we were able to partner with three community-based organizations using the available funding in the UPK grant. So, we currently have students attending UPK at the YJCC in Comac, Kitty Care in Comac, and the Learning Experience of East Northport. We, at the time of the lottery held last year, had more students apply for seats or more parents register for participation than we had seats. But at the end of the day, when we went and finished our registration process, we had exhausted our weight we had exhausted our waitlist. And each of the students that were offered seats received them. And we were able to completely exhaust the waitlist using those 40 seats we had available. Why 40? Our allocation in the UPK grant for the current 2223 school year is $216,000, which equates to $5,400 per pupil. The board should be aware that as part of the county and state legislative committees that I participate in, there is strong advocacy work being done from multiple agencies looking for that per pupil allocation to be increased across the board. It is my understanding that $5,400 has been the allocation per student for UPK in New York State for over a decade. And that does not nearly meet the needs of all of the learners within our state. One of the largest UPK providers in our county on Long Island is Scope. And Scope provides UPK on a CBO basis in many districts. And for the first time in a decade, they need to charge districts more than the state allocation because they were operating their UPK programs at a loss because the $5,400 doesn't cover the expense associating with providing UPK by this not-for-profit organization. So, they're actually raising their tuition to $5,800 per student. And they serve thousands of UPK students across Long Island. So, we are advocating for an increase to that allocation. But we do not know definitively if we will see that. We do not yet know what our allocation will be for the 2324 school year, or the budget that we are planning for, 222324. We are hopeful that we do not see a decrease to our allocation. So, in our planning, we're trying to use that $216,000 as a minimum baseline. We're obviously hoping for more in the aid projection that's allocated for Elwood. In addition, because we had more students apply to participate in the lottery than seats allocated to us, that allows us to apply for funding through the expansion grant. You can't access UPK funding through the expansion grant unless you have an existing UPK. So, this year, we are qualified to do that. And one of the ways we hope to achieve additional funding is by demonstrating that our need exceeds our benefit. But we don't, as you will learn in tonight's budget presentation, we don't have any finality into what our financial aid will be allocated for the district through our foundation aid, our title aid, or our UPK grant. So, we are working with question marks because it's January. We're a little ahead of the curve on some of our budget conversations. We're far more advanced in our planning than typical because there are so many unknowns at this point. We have to use expectations and baselines. So, the baseline for planning, we're counting on seeing what we saw last year and then hoping for more. So, in the coming weeks, RFPs will be sent out to community-based organizations. It's our intention, again, to partner with community organizations. Ms. Dunkle and I took a tour of the three facilities that we currently have students in. We were very impressed with the programs that we saw, the level of service provided to our students. And we've received great feedback about working with our district and our students from those agencies. They have the option, however, to reply to our RFP and want to continue services, or not. And other community-based organizations also have the opportunity to apply to partner with Elwood that may not have taken that opportunity last year. So, our partnerships are yet unknown. So, we don't know where we'll be placing our students. But we will know that by March. And we'll be hoping to conduct our lottery by early April with definitive placements for where the students will be going. As of now, as of today, we checked prior to the meeting, using the mailing that was sent, the posting on the website and social media, we have attracted 72 participants to register for pre-K, hoping for a funded seat for next year. Question asked, if a student is not selected for the lottery, are they still able to attend pre-K? The answer is yes. However, the parents have to independently pay for the tuition. This is for tuition-free UPK. But there are certainly community-based organizations that accept Elwood students on a tuition-paying basis, including the program that we currently house at Harley Avenue. But as of this afternoon, we have 72 students registered for the lottery. Some questions came up about what's happening in our region. So, I sent a survey out to every district in Western Suffolk, Bocys. Just to refresh the memory of the board, there are 18 schools, districts, in Western Suffolk, Bocys, what is one of them. So, the survey was sent to the other 17 districts. 15 responded. I will call the two that didn't and see what was going on. But 15 responded. So, we do have some data that I just wanted to share for informational purposes with the board. So, the district currently offers UPK. Only one district responded that they do not yet offer UPK. Of those of the 15 that responded, some like us are in their first year of UPK, some are in their second year, and some have longstanding programs, either partnerships with CBOs or their own program. I asked the question whether or not the district used a community-based program or they house a program. Now, there was kind of a hybrid answer to that question. Some partner with community-based organizations to host within their own district. Scope is the largest provider of UPK on Long Island. So, those districts that host a CBO within the district indicated that, that they host it. So, 64% of districts said they host it, while 36% said they use community-based organizations in a manner similar to what we have this year in Elwood. I asked if lottery was conducted for those placements. And of the 14 responses, remember, one responded doesn't have pre-K, 93% conduct the lottery. I'm sorry, yes, do conduct the lottery. Then, within that lottery, I asked further question of the role of parent choice within that. So, the question was, if you conduct the lottery, do our parents given a choice about which CBO their child is placed in? 50% said yes, 28.6% said no, and 21.4% said not applicable. So, what would make it not applicable? They have enough seats available that everyone that registers gets a seat, or they only send their students to one singular community-based organization, so there's no need for parent choice to be implemented. So, then I looked anecdotally at some of the comments. I asked for a comment section to learn more about the way they structure their registration and their lottery. And really, parent choice boils down to parent preference in most districts. That, you know, to use Elwood as a model, if we're using three community-based organizations moving forward the way we did this year, parent preference would be afforded. Once we know the definitive placements and we have those registered, we would give them a Google form to indicate what preferences they have. But unfortunately, there's no way to guarantee parent choice because the math just doesn't work. Using this year as a model, if we have 20 students in one organization and 10 in each of the other two, which is what we have, 40 people are selected for the lottery, the first 20 would obviously have their choice between all three organizations. The next 20, it is possible that locations would be full and choice would be limited. So, I think it's important that, moving forward, we use the word "parent preference" and say that will certainly account for parent preference when we move to the next state of our registration process, when we do know what the placements are. Looking at some of the other insights that I gained, first, second, third choices offered. If a sibling had attended an institution, there would be preference given. Some years, we do not need a lottery because the registrations are outnumbered by the seats. We use a combination of district-based and CBO. Oh, and one district has an interesting model where if a parent is offered a seat, but there is not one available in their CBO of choice, they have the option to decline the seat but be placed on the waiting list in the event a seat becomes available in the placement of their choice, which I think is something we should consider moving forward as well. This year, by circumstance, we had some parents who had preference for one placement or another. And we were able to match parents who were able to switch placements and things of that nature because it worked out. We had some parents decline a placement, be placed on a waiting list, similar to this model, and then learn that a placement had been made available, we called them. And then they took it on a second offer. So, these are the things we plan to employ moving forward. The step of the process that we're in right now is looking for the number of registrants. That will help us with the RFP process because we know how many seats we desire. But the real determining factor is when we learn how much aid we have is how many seats we will be able to offer. I hope that is informative. It's a little ahead of timeline because we have some unknowns right now. But I will be happy to provide the board with a future update when some of those questions we have have been answered with clarity. But at this time, are there any questions I can answer for the Board of Education?
No questions, but I do appreciate you keeping us updated and apprised of all the information as it comes readily available. Clearly, it is through state aid runs and budgetary reasons that we don't have full information. But as it comes, if we, the Board of Education, and the community could be regularly updated, I think that would be beneficial for everybody.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Debbie, I'm going to get you a microphone while Martha seeks to make correction just so the folks at home and our recording of the meeting you can be heard. Mrs. Weiss, if you wouldn't mind-
There we go.
Oh, Mrs. Marmalito did it. Okay, let me get this back.
Give him the hug.
Okay. I just wanted to reiterate and to say thank you to Dr. Bossert for reaching out to other districts and asking some questions and inquiries. And I think, you know, as a parent, you have in your mind of what goes around in surrounding districts. And, you know, being the unknown, it's very hard. I mean, all of us have had kids that have gone through pre-K. And, you know, they want your money. And, you know, it's kind of one of those times where you're really, it's really uncertain. You don't, so you don't know. So, it's nice to have some answers. And we look forward to getting some more answers. So, thank you.
Yeah, just, I want to thank you again. I know a lot of preschools now are registering, so I'm sure there's a lot of anxious parents out there because they're not sure if they're going to get into the lottery. But unfortunately, as you provided in detail, we don't have a lot of answers. So, unfortunately, we can't give a lot of answers out. And I know other school districts, a lot of school districts haven't even released any information. You know, we're so early this year, which is great because we're being super transparent more than ever with all of our budgeting this year, which I appreciate. So, all the parents out there, I understand it's a very anxious time because you're not sure if you should sign up. But unfortunately, until we get certain information, we can't move forward, but-
Mr. Scroll, to your point, and thank you for the refresher. I did speak to the directors of the programs we currently partner with. And they assured me that if parents register their child for pre-K for next school year and then are selected for the lottery, they will be refunded their deposit and enrolled-
If they go to that school?
If they are selected for the lottery in any capacity and withdraw, I was told that- let me make sure I'm careful with my words.
Yeah.
I was told, it was verbally indicated to me that deposits would be refunded if students participated in the lottery, were selected, and then withdrew their registration.
Was that every, or just a couple? That was just our providers?
Those that we partner with.
Okay.
Further disclaimer, the Elwood School District will not be reimbursing. Dr. Bossert may have to.
Yeah.
We will not be there.
So, like I said, I know it's, you know, I have two young ones at home. I know it's, you're anxious, you're not sure if you're going to get in. But as soon as Dr. Bossert finds the information, he will tell us and we'll get it out to you as fast as we can. So, thanks again for the update.
Yes, thank you for the update. I just had, just to remind people, when is the last day that we can sign up in the lottery? Or is there a date that it closes?
Yeah, you're testing my tired brain. Now, I'm going to look on the website because-
I think it's important because some of us like to wait until the last second.
It is on the latest news of our website. And it can, we are accepting registrations through Friday, March 31st.
Okay, Friday, March 31st. Great, thank you.
It is anticipated we will conduct the lottery on Monday, April 17th.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bossert. Board is good. Okay, thank you, board. That brings us up to our residence remarks, excuse me. Are there any residents wishing to speak this evening? I will do my blurb, Miss, sorry. The board encourages all residents to attend its meeting. And this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves, state whether they're a resident of the Elwood School District and any organization that they do represent at the meeting. Comments related to the district business or any agenda item concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which the reputation, reputations, privacy, or right to due process could be in some way violated is prohibited. The floor is yours. And I would just ask if you can go to the microphone so the residents at home could also hear you. Yes, please, thank you.
Hi, Megan Dries, resident. I just wanted to first thank you for the due diligence that was, hold this moves, the due diligence that was done in researching the 18 districts or 17 other districts. And I wanted to thank you for clarifying whether parents would have preference moving forward. Thank you. And I also just wanted to say how wonderful it is that we now have access to the expansion grant funding now that we have a program. I just have one or two questions. You said that we have 72 currently who have applied. I'm just wondering how that compares to the numbers last year as far as who applied? Do we know?
I mean, I think that, we talked about it last year, so it's out there. I mean, it's fine, I don't know the number off the top of my head. Off the edge of the question because I don't have the number. I know it was discussed last year.
It was less than that. I think the high-water mark at the conclusion of the registration was in the mid-50s.
So, that's fantastic.
It really is.
That's wonderful, okay. And then my second question is, which two districts don't offer UPK?
I think you might have misheard me. Only two districts did not respond to the survey of the 15 that did respond to the survey. Only one is currently not offering UPK.
Which is the one?
See, you're putting me in a tough spot here. I'm sure Cold Spring Harbor is working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Dries. Dries, excuse me, Dries, I'll get it right. Dries, I liked Rego, it was so much easier. Thank you. Any other residents wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close our first residence remarks. That brings us up to our presentation this evening. We have our budget workshop number two. Unfortunately, Dr. Bossert, would you like to speak to why? Ms. Dunkle is not here this evening.
Much to the chagrin of the Board of Education and community assembled, I will be giving the budget presentation update this evening. Unfortunately, Ms. Dunkle is not available for the board tonight. She had a death in the family. Her mother-in-law lived a long, wonderful life, but passed away this week at 92. And Lorraine is tending to family business with her husband and children, a week to be held tomorrow afternoon. So, she sends her apologies and regrets. But I assure the board that she was essential in all the preparation and scripting of my presentation to the board this evening. Martha, do I have a clicker at the podium if I choose to stand to present? Am I good? Okay, so, once again, the board had asked the administration to expedite the timeline on budget conversations this year. Every year in Elwood, we are faced with challenges when it comes to the budget. Some of them are about where to prioritize our enhancements, things that will be added to the budget. And unfortunately, some of our conversations during my tenure have been, we are faced with deficits and we need to make difficult decisions about reduction. So, with that in mind, the board asked that we begin the process a bit ahead of schedule this year. So, our first budget workshops took place before the turn of the new year. And this workshop is typically a conversation we would have in February, early March. But the reason why I felt it was productive to have these conversations tonight is to make sure that the superintendent's proposed budget is reflective of priorities supported and identified in cooperation with the Board of Education. At no time does the administration want to provide the board either not enough information or information with not enough time to process before asking you to adopt a budget and an associated tax levy. So, a January conversation, unfortunately, is filled with a good amount of unknowns. So tonight, we're talking about proposals, hypotheses, and what we do know. But I think it's important to understand, there's a lot of missing information that we need to receive, certainly before finalizing a budget proposal to the board. So for the community, President, I'm going to ask that I speak to you directly for a moment. This is what we're thinking about. This is not a proposal. This is not a request of the board to make an adoption. This is where we are in conversations, and this is an important point to emphasize. Martha, where am I pointing? Okay. So, what we know tonight is that we're going to review the three-part component of the budget proposal, what we know, and programmatic adjustments that we are currently discussing. And we will talk about capital reserve. So as the board is now at work, because you're a seasoned board member, we are required to present the budget to the board and community in three separate parts. We have the administrative component, the capital component, and the program component. I don't like the clicker, Martha. How do I go backwards, please? Thank you. So, within the three parts of the budget, the administrative portion, it's important to understand because it's commonly misunderstood that administrative component is indicative of administrative salaries in isolation, but it includes everything that happens under the umbrella of the superintendent's office, the business office, and HR, and associated expenditures, not just the individuals and the staff who work within those offices. The capital portion of our budget includes our buildings and grounds, our utilities, and debt service as part of our capital component. The program component is where you want to see the focus and the portion of the budget that we tend to spend the greatest amount of time focusing on, which is expenditures that include everything instructional, transportation, and special agent costs. Within each of these components, associated costs regarding healthcare, the teachers' retirement system, and the employees' retirement system are broken down within those components. Yeah, I'm just going to, so, this is a pie chart that you want to see. You want to see, as a board and community, that the heavy emphasis of our expenditures and our revenue is being spent on the program portion of our budget. In a textbook for school administration, it says that this portion of your budget should be 65% or greater. So 72% is a healthy level of our budget being focused on the instructional program. You see also that 12% is on those administrative costs that we discussed within that component, and then 16% on capital. So what we know now, and this is really a reminder of things that we already discussed and reviewed at the December 8th board meeting. The governor's proposal for foundation was released in November, and it indicated an increase to Elwood of approximately 17.7% or nearly a $1.7 million increase. That is an unprecedented increase to our aid. We are in the midst of a cycle where across the state of New York, the governor and the legislature are playing catch-up on trying to make districts whole within the foundation aid formula. And this is year two of three, where we are catching up to be 100% funded according to what the formula indicates for our district. So this is the last time, when it comes to foundation aid from the state, we should expect to see such a large increase. And please keep in mind, and it's an important caveat, that this is the governor's proposal. The legislature can accept or reject that number. Now that's good news, bad news. The good news is, they can increase it. The legislature has the authority to reject the governor's budget, do some negotiating on our behalf, and increase that number. The bad news is, they can also choose to decrease it. Last year, they chose to decrease the governor's proposal because the percentage of increase for Elwood was substantial. We were very thankful, but it was decreased ever so slightly when approved by the legislature. It was thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars, not tens of thousands of dollars, but it was a decrease, not an increase. The other good news is Governor Hochul gave the state of the state at the beginning of the year, and I was very pleased to hear, as I'm sure all members of our community were, her focus on supporting public schools. She made that a pillar of her state of the state, how she wanted to make sure the budget proposal enhanced and supported public schools. So I am hopeful that the legislature sees fit to follow that lead. We know from our last meeting what our high-cost items are. We know that we are entering the second year of an extensive contract with our transportation vendor, Huntington Coach, and within that second year of the contract, there's a substantial increase to expenses involving transportation. One of the biggest drivers of increase to our budget is the cost of healthcare benefits. This does not come as a surprise. Post-pandemic, the cost of insurance premiums has increased dramatically. While the bargaining units, each bargaining unit and each employee in the Elwood School District does contribute to their healthcare benefits, the average contribution rate for an employee is 20%, which means that the district pays 80% of health insurance premiums. Ms. Dunkle has estimated that the cost of healthcare will increase, will exceed 20%. That is a big number, that is a big increase, and I'm sorry to say that when you combine the increased cost to transportation and the increased cost to benefits, you have now exhausted the increase to our foundation aid. So when you see that number and you say, my goodness, $1.7 million is wonderful, no. Unfortunately, it does not quite help us to break even on those additional expenses that we already know are included in our rollover budget. Transportation benefits, contractual obligations, and other expenses that we know to anticipate well exceed that $1.6 million, $1.7 million. Security is a high-cost item, and it has been a focus. If you were to make a pie chart of all of our budget proposals throughout the course of my tenure, you will notice that the largest increase is to security. That's something I hide from, it's not something I shy away from, it's something I celebrate. We have invested into the security, both infrastructure and staffing within our district, so the fastest-growing area of our budget is security. And I'm sorry to say that I don't see any reductions to our security costs moving forward to next year. I see that we need to use our money strategically to make sure we're keeping our children as safe as possible. Special education costs continue to rise for two reasons. The cost of providing services to students increases, three reasons, forgive me. The level of need of our students is increasing, and the number of students classified for services under special education is increasing. The number of incoming kindergartners that are classified in some capacity by our CPSE, our Committee for Preschool Special Education Services, that now have to transition to the CSE as they enter kindergarten, there's 40 students who are in preschool who currently receive services. Now, when you have your mental model for that, for some students, it strictly supports services like speech, or OT, or PT, but for some of those 40 students, it's students with more profound needs that require a special class placement. And 40 is a big number. It's certainly far more than the number of classified kindergartners we have this year. Mrs. Handley? So, again, it is important to understand what the bullets on this slide indicate. This is what the subject of administrative conversations have been. I tried to be careful in how I both titled the slide and what I parenthetically stated because when folks view this slide out of context and are not listening to the presentation or re-watching the board meeting video, and it's just posted, I wanted to make it as clear as possible that these are potential items under investigation that we would hope to be able to pursue should the funding be available. I know the board understands that. We've had conversations through the years. I'm hopeful that the community will as well. I hesitate to call this a wish list because that makes it seem pie in the sky, things that we'll never achieve. These are priorities that have been identified by the administration in partnership with all stakeholders to say, here are where we believe the needs are in the district. We would hope to have the finance to support each one of these bulleted items, but we know that that is highly unlikely. So when our total aid is discovered, when our tax cap levy is calculated, when we look at what our total revenue could potentially be after the board considers what tax levy they're comfortable with proposing to residents, that'll help us look back at this list and identify those that we believe we can include and those that will unfortunately have to wait for brighter days. But just to look quickly through the list, we have a number of grant-funded programs that have been wonderful. The last thing I want to do is confuse a budget conversation with a grant conversation. So we're not going to talk about the grant at all this evening, but it is going to be the sole focus of our presentation at the next meeting on January 26th. So part of our challenge moving forward will be when items are no longer able to be financed through the grant and need to be placed within the district budget. But that's a conversation for two weeks from now. We are looking at the potential addition of an ICT UPK classroom. Now, you just heard me talk about the UPK grant, UPK funding, and it's unknown. Well, we're going to look very, very carefully at that because one of the things that we think may be beneficial to our preschool population is housing a district-funded ICT, which is it, which is itinerant co-teacher, formerly known as inclusion, integrated co-teacher, forgive me, they changed it twice, where we have a special educated, special education teacher working collaboratively with a regular education teacher to provide students, support special education services in an inclusive environment. So two teachers for a classroom of 20 children in a UPK model, and up to 10 of those students being identified for special education services. We know that there is a dearth of that type of placement available across Suffolk County. We know, as we sit in January, there are students not in Elwood, but in other school districts in Suffolk County that have not yet been placed by their Committees of Preschool Special Education because those seats have been exhausted, they don't exist. So there are students who are either misplaced or not receiving the services that they require to be successful because of a lack of seats. All of the students who require ICT services in Elwood have been placed in Suffolk County-funded programs, and they are prospering. We are concerned that that may not be the case moving forward, so we're investigating the potential of housing an ICT UPK. We know that the third bullet is likely going to have to move up to a requirement rather than a priority. Because of the number of classified students entering kindergarten next year, and I told you, but it's 40, we feel that one ICT class will not meet the needs of the 40 students. We can exceed the ratio that the state allows to place more than, more than the maximum number of students in a singular classroom. So we would require two classrooms to make sure that we're not exceeding the state guidelines and to make sure we're creating environment, class size, Mrs. Bell, that's most conducive to learning for our handicapped kindergarten students. The fourth, maintaining the focus support program at EMS. We have had a wonderful program that requires minimal staffing in place at Elwood Middle School. There are currently 17 students participating in a program that is not AIS, it is not, it is not Resource Room, it is support period where students are individually matched with teachers and our school psychologists who are assigned to monitor their progress. And of the 17, 17 have showed marked improvement since participating in the program. So the thoughts of wanting to continue that wonderful initiative are certainly part of our priorities. We are looking at additional special education staffing for EMS. The incoming sixth grade has a larger number of classified students than the current sixth grade, so moving another ICT program, another special education teacher to maximize student services and reduce class size, Mrs. Bell, at the sixth grade, I think will be a welcomed addition to the budget. And again, it's one of those cost drivers because of full-time staff member. We budgeted about $90,000 when you consider salary and benefits, so adding a special education teacher is just about $100,000 addition to the budget. But again, it's quickly shifting from priority to requirement as the view of next year becomes clearer. We are looking at reverting to our prior ICT model at Boyd, where we had attempted to put in a model, not as much for cost reduction as we just thought it would be a productive model, to have the special education teacher divided between classrooms and offset the services provided to the students with a teacher assistant. The model's in place in many school districts, it had been effective here. It's not an unfamiliar model, but because of the level of the need of the students this particular year, it is not working as well as we feel is most beneficial to the students. So we just put out a posting to hire an additional half-day special education teacher to finish out this year to maximize the services for students, and then the proposal is to maintain that level of staffing moving into next year. So when we understand something is not optimal, we correct it immediately, but then it impacts the rollover budget for next year. And the posting for that position was actually just advertised today. If you know any highly qualified special education teacher looking to join the ranks of the Elwood School District, please share my email address. Some of the other items that we identified, assistant coaches for varsity sports. Mr. Shanahan, our athletic director, has long been an advocate to add assistant coaches for targeted sports and athletics within the high school. Elwood School District is one of the few, very few, I believe the number is four, in Suffolk County that does not employ assistant coaches for some sports like soccer, basketball, volleyball. There are sports that, there are athletic initiatives that place some of our students at a competitive disadvantage to their peers in other districts because our coaches are wonderful, our coaches work hard, but it's very difficult to differentiate your coaching and split students into groups and work on specific skills and run drills with one adult. There are also some supervisory concerns when the team is in the locker room and the other team is on the field, so for supervisory purposes, assistant coaches would be wonderful. We have to make sure our budget can support them. Second teams at the middle school for high-demand athletics. The last thing you want to do to a middle school student is extinguish the flame of a desire to participate in athletics. We believe heavily in athletics, to build collaboration, to build teamwork, to build physical and mental acuity. The last thing we want to tell a 12-year-old is, no, you can't play. And unfortunately, when you have a high-demand sport like basketball for the boys, volleyball for the girls, we are in a position in Elwood Middle School where we do have to cut students from participating. I hate the word, I was looking for a synonym and it didn't come to me. But we do, what we do in those circumstances is we offer intermurals in those sports so students can build their skills, they can participate, they can have fun, we hope, but they don't have the opportunity to participate in a team. So what some other middle schools are able to do, and what we would hope to do moving forward, is for those high-demand sports, look for second, for second teams, which requires a second coach, which has an impact on the budget. Continuation of our Chromebook replacement cycle, that's kind of a have-to as well. Fortunately, we have some grant monies available that help us to replace aging equipment. But for every student that graduates John Glenn High School with a Chromebook, we try to take those older machines out of circulation. And the latest generation of Chromebooks that we are supplying to our students are those with a touchscreen that have some capabilities that not only help with instruction, but also help with some state mandates that are coming forward regarding commuter-based testing and being able to manipulate items on the screen and computations and other things that I'm sure Dr. Hood will be really anxious to roll up her sleeves and work on. The continued growth of our business and coding electives, you know what? Dr. Hall, I had asked you before the meeting if there were a few bullets that you wouldn't mind speaking to, I believe that's one of your bullets?
Yes, thank you. We have been working to build our business department over the last few years. We know that students have indicated a high level of interest, and we really want to be able to meet that interest. We also know it's an area that students want to explore more when they're determining what their college major might be. We're currently in the process of preparing to implement the computer science and digital fluency standards, and we would like to have a course that all of our high school students would take, as well as some electives where they might meet those standards. The last few years, we've had a lot of success with building our AP program in computer science. You may recall several years ago, we began with independent study, then we had our first AP, then we brought our second AP in, independent study, and now this year, we have two AP computer science courses running. But those students are taking advantage of that, but there are some students who are not interested in taking it at the AP level, so we'd love to add an elective like coding that would provide opportunities for more students to be involved. We are also working to prepare for the implementation of the SEAL of Civic Readiness, and Mr. McNamara and the high school administration will speak more about that when they do a presentation on high school updates in March. And the SEAL is a designation that students can earn as they graduate, and it actually results in a physical seal on their diploma. And what's really important about it is that it has several elements that we believe help students to be responsible citizens. And so the program as laid out by the New York State Education Department is to help students attain a high level of proficiency students attain a high level of proficiency in civic knowledge, civic skills, civic mindset, and civic experiences. And the state has outlined a variety of ways that students can earn points that would result in the designation of the SEAL of Civic Readiness. And it's a large enterprise. They might be earning points through social studies courses that they're taking, electives, AP classes. They would earn it through research projects at the middle school level, research projects at the high school level, a much more involved project, a capstone project. There's also service learning and there are civic experiences, for example, our students who participate in mock trial. So, in order to track all of that, schools have to implement a rather involved system because you're tracking students earning these opportunities from seventh grade through 12th grade. So, what a lot of schools who are starting on this road are finding helpful is to have advisors to like a seven, eight, a nine, 10, 11, 12 advisor to really help promote the SEAL and to manage all of the requirements for the New York State Education Department. We are also, Dr. Bossert, the next one I believe was a BOSI's item?
Correct. There is a BOSI COSER that we are looking at very, very carefully. One of the things that we have discussed at many public meetings is the increased need for mental health services made available within our district and within our community to support our students. Unfortunately, we have seen a sharp increase in the number of students who require support by a member of our PPS staff, whether it's the school psychologist, social worker, our school counselors. But there are some students where the need exceeds that. Sometimes we find ourselves in a position where we need to make difficult recommendations for parents, for students who need to either emergent care or ongoing care for mental health needs beyond what our district is able to offer. So, Northwell Health has come up with a program to partner with public schools that basically opens those opportunities up to students in participating districts where a school psychologist, building principal can call the service directly and find immediate care for a child. Whereas it might take months to get an appointment these days with a counselor or months to get an evaluation or, God forbid, months to get a bed in a residential facility, participating in a partnership with Northwell helps to expedite all of those processes. It has expense associated with it. The approximate expense for a partnership for the Elwood School District reflective of our student population is approximately $100,000. That's the difficult news, but I think it'd be worth adding every penny. The worst news is all the seats are full. Northwell has closed their partnership while they work to expand their services without diluting services from those already participating. This is not new information. There were a number of districts who sought partnership last year who were denied because the list is full, but good news available today, so I wasn't able to add it to the slide. I learned at a superintendent's meeting this morning that there will be some competition for Northwell in this area of partnership with school district from PM Pediatrics. Northwell leadership has stated they welcome that because they understand the needs of school districts in the community and they know it exhausts their ability to serve. So, having other agencies like PM Pediatrics try to emulate or replicate their model, I think is in everyone's best interest and most notably our students. So, we're going to take a very careful look at what's happening with Northwell, what's happening with PM Pediatrics and what we feel is in the best interest of our students who, you know, really need this additional support. Thank you, Dr. Hull.
Our next item is involving our family and consumer science program. Currently, you may know our high school fax teacher is actually assigned to both Elwood Middle School and John Glenn High School. This would allow us to have a full-time position at John Glenn and to meet some important initiatives. We are a member of the Western Suffolk BOSI's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion COSER and we meet with the other school districts in Western Suffolk BOSI's with the coordinator, Tracy Edwards, and we explore how we help our students to have access to opportunities. And one of the things that has become an initiative is how do we encourage students to pursue the career of education? We know that there is a nationwide shortage of teachers and in addition, how do we encourage more diverse students to enter into the field of education? We know that when students can see themselves in their school setting, they have a much higher degree of success because of their sense of feeling welcome. And so, we also want to encourage students to pursue education. So, the goal of a child development course is to educate students about the field of education, educate them about the needs of young students and learners, and actually partner our high school students in the class with students at the elementary level and give them the opportunity to go down to the elementary and do some teaching with our students. And we hope to see an increase in students selecting education as a major. As well, an initiative, an important initiative of the Curriculum Committee of the Board of Education for several years now has been increasing student access to information about careers. We want students to understand what their opportunities are and to help them make these decisions about majors and life choices. So, we know that there are several schools that have embedded the career coordination within their school day. And now, we have two career advisors through our federal grant, which we'll talk about at that presentation next week, in two weeks, but we are hoping to see bringing this into the school day so that more students can take advantage of the offerings that we have, increase our career speakers, increase internship opportunities. Those things require adult supervision and coordination. We also are looking to build toward a course for the 24, 25 school year, and this one incorporates several important initiatives. The first one is we know with the computer literacy and digital fluency that we need to find a place in the high school schedule where all students will have an opportunity to learn the components of these standards. And the instruction will include cybersecurity, digital literacy, computational thinking, impacts of computing, and networks and system design. Now, some of these elements are present in some of the courses, but not all of the students take them. And so, we have been discussing, Mr. McNamara, his team, the curriculum office, how we can create a place in student schedules where they can all have access to this required coursework. Our K through eight students already have some of these elements through our Smart Start Grant, and so we can enhance that program and deliver it to our K eight students. This additional course, we are calling at this time Life Literacies because it involves four really important areas for students. So, one of them would be the computer literacy or the digital fluency. Another is another topic, another priority we've discussed, which is financial literacy. And we work on that in our business program, but again, not all of our students have access to that. So, this would allow more access to all of our ninth grade. We also want to bring in our civics literacy. We want all students to have an opportunity to earn the SEAL of Civic Readiness. So, for example, our AP students will, there's points given for AP courses and social studies, so there are some students that are going to naturally have greater access to earning the SEAL. But by implementing this course, first of all, we can provide important instruction in these areas of civics literacy, which I think will benefit all of our students, but it also allows them an opportunity to earn some of the points for the more in-depth projects. And we'd like to partner that with news literacy. We currently teach our students about news literacy in grade six and grade 12, and that's through our partnership with Stony Brook University where several years back, we were selected as a lighthouse district. So, what we are looking to do now is build another point in the curriculum where we can help our students with news literacy. And because we have so many ninth graders who currently have a study hall, we believe that that would be a great place to put our life literacy's class. It does require some planning because we're talking about putting in a requirement for all ninth graders. That's why we're talking about it now as we prepare to do that in two years. And Dr. Bossert?
Thank you, Dr. Hull. The final bullet, Ms. Dunkle would say I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, we have an ongoing desire to try to continue to fund our transfer to capital. This will help us to make those minor capital improvements such as enhancements to our security, our ventilation, our infrastructure. That is money that we need so that when we do down the road need to go out for a large capital bond to the community, the priority items have already been addressed within the budget, so we don't find ourselves in a position where there are things we cannot do without. So, to transfer the capital is to help keep us fiscally healthy, but also to make sure we have funding available for things that crop up. Dr. Hood, while you're here, I appreciate you and your family staying for the budget presentation. Dr. Hull has heard me say many times through the years that if you take a look at this slide, your job over the next few school years is to just make all of this so. Make it so, Dr. Hood, make it so.
And grant-funded. Do that, it's a win.
Make it so. But for the Board of Education, again, as I started the presentation by saying, oh my gosh, Martha, that was me. This slide is to indicate, if you could just advance it back to that slide for me, Mrs. Hanley, yes. This slide is to indicate items under investigation, and I alluded to those that really are becoming more things that will be required to do and those that are priorities and those that we would really like to see in place to support our students, but we understand may have to be funding contingent. Really, all of these items are funding contingent. We need to make sure we're in a position to enhance our budget in any way, and I really, really hope not to be back in February or March talking about painful reductions as we have had occasion to do in the past. But before I advance the slide and ask the board for feedback or input about items not on the slide, do any board members have questions about the items on the slide?
You're limited to two, Ms. Weiss.
No, you can go, I'm just kidding. I'm sure the community is aware that the board has access to the presentation as of last week, so there are always some things I am able to help to clarify prior to the public presentation. So, I can assure you, the board always has lots of questions, but these, any additional questions from the Board of Education?
Yeah, and thank you because when you're reading a presentation, it's so different than when somebody is presenting it. And so, I really appreciate the clarity that you bring to the items. You know, when I was reading, I looked at some of those items, I'm like, hmm, I don't really understand, I didn't really know what ICT meant and things like that. So, you know, it's a lot of our work is done before we even come into this meeting, just to understand that. So, I appreciate the way, and Maureen, I sat on curriculum the other day and, you know, just explaining some of those programs, I'm so excited. So, and I'm sure Dr. Hood will take over for that, and we're excited about that too, the growth. But one question I did have, and it's kind of just a reiteration because I always have this mental block, is the 12% that's admin, that includes all the related, whoops, time to go, all the related costs, correct? It includes the benefits, it includes whatever.
Yeah, I want to make sure that's clear and thank you for asking me to emphasize that point. Administrative structure within the components of the budget does not just indicate administrative salaries. It's everything that happens under the umbrella of the superintendent's office, the business office. So, while there are salaries included, including administrators, clerical staff, support staff, there are also items like health benefits, retirement contributions, materials and supplies and equipment that's necessary to run those offices. It's not just the people, it's everything that happens within that space.
Okay, and that's what I thought, but I just wanted the clarity on it.
Thank you.
And then when you spoke about the mental health, the BOSI's, that program I'm looking for?
It's really a Northwell program, but Northwell wisely coupled with BOSI's so that the contract from the district would be through Western Suffolk BOSI's, so we'd receive aid back on the contract.
That's my point, I was trying to get to that, okay, great. That's it. That would be wonderful, honestly, because the needs are so high.
Listen, I was disappointed to learn they were at capacity last year. I was encouraged to learn that others are attempting to replicate the program. Perhaps NYU might want to pursue a similar program.
I don't know, you think we have a connection there?
I don't know.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any other board members?
Ms. Weiss is being modest, she has a lot of questions prior to the meeting, prior to the meeting. I joke with Ms. Weiss all the time, but she really...
Anybody who knows me knows that.
Yeah, we know, but I just want to say Ms. Weiss really scrolled, a lot of questions asked prior to the meeting that were able to help drive Dr. Bossert's presentation, so it's not just limited to two questions, Ms. Weiss, I was just kidding, our running joke. Does anybody else though have any questions to the budget? I will just say a few things quickly, not questions, but remarks. As far as the health insurance contributions, I think it's important to emphasize that our teachers unit, which is the largest component of who utilizes the health insurance offered, I won't say offered by the district, but part of the benefits package, when some of the current board was here prior to their current contract there, and correct me if I'm wrong, their contribution was well under 18%, was it 18%? Under 20%? I don't want to speak to definitive numbers, but that through this contract, we were able to partner with our teacher union to make sure that they understood that there's increasing costs. It's something that the district and the homeowners, everybody can't bear, and they got that and they were very supportive. I wouldn't say very supportive because nobody wants to pay more than what they have to, but they understood the need for the district to not be able to continue to shoulder the burden of the current contract. By the time it finalizes, a 22% contribution?
Yeah, the teachers will finalize the contract at a 22% contribution and within each of our bargaining units, over the last five years, each bargaining unit leadership has agreed to increase their contribution to health insurance because they understand it's a partnership with the district. The highest contribution to healthcare in the district right now is at 25% and I don't believe there are any bargaining units below 19.75%.
I just think it's important to express that we do have a wonderful relationship with our collaborative bargaining units and they understand the need of the district and they contribute where they can. My last point is how about computer literacy, financial literacy, and civic literacy, if that's not something that our students need now, I don't know what is. So, I'm looking forward to seeing if that's something, you're asking for board input, students need to learn how to balance checkbook, they need to understand that if they get a flat tire on the side of the road, they got to understand to be civically engaged in the process, they have to understand coding and computer science and all the things that are in front of them. It's not just a phone, it's not just a device, there's real-world applications, and I think they're hungry for it. I think they're looking for it and it's an exciting time for the students to be able to engage in that and have a program in front of them that hasn't been there. So, we've lighthearted the first one, it'd be nice to be a part of the second one. So, I know you're going to ask the board, what are some things that we look forward to or we would like to see? That's what I would like to see.
This time, you know that each spring I have my pizza group of seniors and we do our exit interviews, and the point that seniors have consistently made in my time in Elwood is that they hope to leave high school with more real-life, practical experience, and they mentioned things like opening a bank account, like using a debit card. They talk about things like ironing and grocery shopping, and these are the things that are beyond ordering DoorDash on an app on your phone that they are looking for, and we've heard them. So, the more opportunities we can create to provide these opportunities for students, the happier we will be. Good segue, Martha, if you could please advance the slide for me, is we are looking for feedback from the Board of Education. We want to know if you support the investigations that are underway, if there's anything that will absolutely be a dead end if we bring it to the board, or as importantly, if there's something that we did not present, that's something that isn't on the radar, that the board collectively feels is a priority that the administration should begin to review in preparation for a budget recommendation. The floor is yours, board.
I just want to give kudos to Dr. Hull and the Curriculum Committee because about a year ago, we really started to impress upon the fact that the kids are lacking personal life skills. I know in the state of Florida, they are mandated to take a personal finance course. We are lucky to have that course in this school district, but as you said, many kids don't get access to that just because of scheduling issues. But that is one of the most important skills that our children can learn. I mean, they don't even know how to sign a check, they don't even know how to sign their names. So, we need to like start at basics, start back to basics. I'm glad you are trying to bring everything together. Ninth grade is a beautiful time to do that. You know, we had freshman seminar, we have study hall, freshman seminar doesn't exist anymore, so now we have study halls. So, perfect place to plug that in, great age, and I just think that without those skills, we're just going to continue to struggle with everything else. So, they heard our concerns, they've been really working with guidance, they've revamped the guidance website. I'm so thrilled to be a part of that committee and you've done a really good job driving that ship. I'm looking forward to Dr. Hood taking over those reins and we'll keep plugging away, but I'm so happy to see it come to fruition. There's been a lot of really, really good work being done specifically in that committee that I have... that I have, you know, witnessed myself, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree with everyone. I'd like to see more authentic student experiences where the students are actually doing the work. One class that a lot of school districts have is called virtual enterprises, where students run their own virtual business, they hire a CEO, they go to trade shows. To me, that's the best kind of learning a child can have. You know, I think also we see a big decline in our trades.
Some really good tweets about that yesterday.
Oh, yeah. You know, there's a huge need for more people to go into the trades. There was an article the other day, we need more carpenters. You know, I think Elwood's great. We offer so many strong academic classes. I'd love to see some different options for students because not everyone needs to go to college to be successful. So I think we're on the right track, and I think just having more authentic student experiences will really put Elwood kids way ahead when they leave our district.
Would you mind if I made a comment?
No.
Mrs. Scroll, Mrs. Weiss and I were able to attend the annual holiday dinner at Western Suffolk BOCs recently, where the students highlight their vocational experiences. And it's everything from veterinary experiences to aeronautics to fashion design. One of the things that I do take great pride in, and I would hope the board does as well, is the number of Elwood students participating in these vocational programs has tripled in the last 10 years or so. We used to have a budget allocation that was reflective of limiting capacity. Right now, we budget for the number of requests we receive for most programs. There are some that we still have to cap because of the exorbitant expense, but we have a much greater volume of students who are taking advantage of those vocational preparations. I mean, we heard the same conversations. When a student can graduate high school with a high school diploma and a certificate of completion from the BOCs welding program and immediately join a welding unit for $90,000 with full medical benefits at age 18, why wouldn't we encourage students to pursue that type of experience? The college experience is wonderful. There has been an evolution in Elwood. Prior to my arrival, there was an expression of Harvard-ready that was used to speak to the rigor of academics. We pivoted to college or career-ready being a more commonly used phrase. We've abandoned that one as well. We now say future-ready because we understand that the paths our student will take will be varied, will be diverse, and will best meet their wants and needs. So we're very careful about that. And we make sure to help students to understand the variety of opportunities that exist and encourage them to pursue passions.
Yeah, and there's another thing that's growing on Long Island is they're building five giant wind farms. And we're going to be the biggest in the country doing this, and they need people to work. Whether 80% of the jobs are going to be manufacturing, but, you know, you can go to Farmingdale and get a certificate and get right to work, or you can get the four-year degree, and they want to start you at $90,000 because they want to keep young people on Long Island. So there are so many new opportunities coming to New York, and, you know, I know you guys are doing a great job, and I would just like to let everyone, every student know there's not just two choices anymore, there's a thousand choices what they could do with their life.
A shocking statistic, well, shocking to me, perhaps not to all. The largest employer on Long Island are public schools. The second-largest employer on Long Island are still companies associated with the former Grumman. It's still those trades, it's still those skills that are in desperate need in our region and around the world. 100%.
When, when, we first went, these dinners are wonderful because they just expose you to so much. And there are people there that, you know, yes, you can learn a welding skill, but you can also pick up, go to community college, or go on to become, I don't know, an engineer, a materials engineer or something like that, from that. So it's not like one or the other. And, you know, I think that has to be, we, you know, we want our kids to have the most opportunity. And I, I do, I mean, it's amazing.
Yeah, there's a, speaking of that, we have a class where I work called the Home Improvement. We have kids going to college, going to Harvard, but they're learning how to put in sockets, and they're learning how to put fans in because they're going to be doing that for the rest of their lives. So, and I know we have a great technology class at our high school.
For hire, Mrs. Scroll.
And one more thing, when we were in, I remember when one of my kids was in middle school, they had some sort of financial literacy program that was an outside company that came in. Do we still do that?
Yeah, I recall what you're talking about.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
Because I happen to know the young man who was facilitating for us as a former student. There are outside businesses and agencies who as part of community service will send their financial experts there, their consultants, their bankers, into classrooms to do three-week lessons, four-week lessons with students. Yes, some of those opportunities are still available. A lot of things went on hiatus during COVID, but we're starting to see them become resurrected, which we enjoy.
Tom just brought up a, you know, sparked when he said about the businesses doing that.
Yeah. So I asked Mrs. Marks, our district clerk, to make sure she was taking copious notes of any ideas or suggestions, priorities of the Board of Education. And I saw the pen moving as you were speaking. Is there anything else that you feel is missing from that identification of priorities? Or please be candid, is there anything there you just can't see yourself being supportive of as a member of the Board of Education if a budget is brought forward that's inclusive of these items?
Thank you for your presentation. I, I really liked, I mean, just being on the curriculum committee with Mrs. Mamalito. And I echo really Dr. Hull's hard work and hopefully continued by, with Dr. Hood, that we're going to start some literacy for our students because I also know that they are asking for it. I did want to suggest, and I like all the ideas that you presented, especially the partnership with Northwell and PMP Pediatrics possibly. I do feel, I really like that we have the basketball, the new basketball and the new bowling program, the unified teams. I applaud that. I do want to see maybe more access to different types of sports. I like, I like that we have the girls wrestling now. I want to see.
Home match tomorrow, 5:30.
Very good.
Our first.
And I want to see more, I guess, just different types of sports or more access to sports, the arts, music for all of our students. Maybe if there are some barriers or access issues to certain types of, you know, extracurricular activities that we have, I would like to see a little bit more, you know, inclusivity in some of our offerings.
Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui. And I will tell you, I was asked to submit an entry to a journal that's being kept across the state of just celebrating education. And I was asked to give a narrative anecdote of something taking place in the district that brought pride to our community. I wrote about the Unified Basketball Program. I really, of all the things that we were able to enhance and add to our budget last year, that was the one that was most gratifying. And to see that expand to bowling this year and to entertain future opportunities moving forward, I think is everyone's priority. So thank you, Dr. Siddiqui.
Dr. Boss, for those that don't know what Unified Basketball or Bowling is, would you mind just?
Sure. As a, as a offset of the Special Olympics, sports and athletic opportunities are offered for children with disabilities. And within that program, the students with disabilities are partnered with typically developing peers. So for instance, with the Unified Basketball Program, we had some of our special education students who wished and desired to play basketball, and then they were mentored and supported by our varsity basketball coach and many members of the basketball program. And I have to tell you, just from anecdotes that I received, those relationships extended beyond the games, extended beyond their practices. There were typically developing kids attending birthday parties at the, at the homes of their teammates, inviting, you know, kids over for shootarounds in the front lawn and things of that nature that has to warm your heart when you, when you see those types of things occurring. And then when they pass each other in the hallways, the high fives, the bro hugs, all of those things happening for male and female students and athletes, we were really happy to add bowling, and the board is going to see a recommendation on the next agenda to appoint a coach for the Invade Bowling Program. And we just have to see more students participate, both those with disabilities and those seeking to partner with them. Really a great addition and something we will look to expand in any way possible. Hearing no additional items from the board, I will interpret that as there is support for the items currently under review by the administration. So we will continue those investigations because that's really what it is, to see which rise as mandated requirements, which become priorities, and which unfortunately we'll have to wait till healthier economic times. I really hope that future presentations include many of these items, and I really hope not to be speaking to the board about any reductions. The next few weeks will help to make those things clear. I do wish to express to the board, Ms. Dunkle prepared this entirety of the presentation. I reviewed the slides with her, obviously collaborate on all of the content, but this is Ms. Dunkle's work. I know she regrets not being here to be able to present it tonight. I am sure she will watch the video, and at some point she will be upset with me for something I stated in definitive terms or something I misstated. So if any of that occurred, Ms. Dunkle will make sure to clarify at the next meeting. But moving forward is the next slide. Oh, there is actually one other item. I apologize. This is something to keep in mind of a conversation. If you could just click the rest of the bullets, Martha. We will have to make a decision in the coming weeks regarding whether or not we intend to use money currently available in our capital reserve. We do have funds available to enhance things like our camera system, our security in entirety, the infrastructure of our security. We have had discussions about things like vestibules, gates and booths, security windows. I'm not sure there's a definitive recommendation forthcoming on physical structure, but infrastructure like cameras, servers, and things that will help us to enhance our surveillance may really be something the board may want to consider putting out to voters. In order to access funds in the capital reserve, it has to be by voter referendum. It's not an increase to the budget, it's not an increase or an impact on the tax levy. It is using money we have already saved that was part of our revenues for a specific function that must be voter-approved because of the nature of the expense. These are items that we couldn't typically include in our operating budget, but through the healthy fiscal decisions we've made with the capital reserve, we now have the money and we have to choose how to best spend it. So Ms. Dunkle would very much like to expedite those conversations within the board committees, technology, safety facilities, so that a recommendation can be brought forward to the full board for consideration. February, March, we will have to decide whether or not we're going to include a voter referendum on capital reserve. Ms. Dunkle will continue that conversation in small committees and then back here. So finally, moving forward, Mrs. Hanley, thank you. At the February 9th meeting, Ms. Dunkle will make the next presentation, and she'll probably do it far more quickly than I did tonight, and it's kind of funny that the roles reversed. We will talk about what our initial tax levy calculation is. That's a very important number, as the board is aware, that there is a formula that sets the limit for how much the tax levy can be increased. The board always has to consider what our residents will support, what we think is responsible to both the district and our taxpayers. But there is a legal limit. It's perceived to be 2%. The board is wise and knows that is not the case. There is a formula that helps us to calculate that number based upon the Consumer Price Index and exemptions and some other factors that Ms. Dunkle will take us through. And hopefully by that February 9th, we will have our definitive state aid projections so that we can better talk about where we are in our rollover budget and what enhancements or reductions we may be faced with from the revenue versus the expenditure side of the budget. Questions and comments should be made to Ms. Dunkle. Her contact information is there, but I am happy to entertain any additional questions the board may have or if the board seeks any further clarification, I'm happy to make sure you get it.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. And I think at the nine o'clock hour, we will direct all our questions to Ms. Dunkle for a much more expedited answer. I'm kidding. Nice job, Dr. Bossert, filling in. It's good to know you can wear many hats. Thank you, Ms. Weiss. After the presentation, we are up to our donations this evening, and Mrs. Weiss is going to go over them with us.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the following donations with our gratitude. $50,000 procured by the New York State Assembly for the purpose of enhancing and upgrading our technology infrastructure with appreciation to Assemblyman Stern for his efforts on the district's behalf, who we honored earlier this evening. The second one is $640 and $240 from Elwood SEPTA to support the advisors of the Before School Friendship Clubs at Harley Avenue Primary School for the period of December 22nd through February 2023. Oh my God, I can't believe we're saying 2023. And those, that is a wonderful program. And so we are very grateful to the SEPTA for providing that support to us. Thank you. That's it, right?
That's it. Thank you, Ms. Weiss. May I have a motion for the following aforementioned comments of donations from Ms. Weiss? Motion by Mrs. Mamalito, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. All in favor? 5-0. Brings us up to our consent agenda this evening. Dr. Bossert, after the consent agenda, I know you have some remarks to make on some acceptance of some resignations this evening. So at this time, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Motion, Mr. Scroll, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? 5-0. Dr. Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Tomio. Tonight, upon my hesitant recommendation, the board accepted the resignation for the purposes of retirement from two outstanding members of the Elwood School community that we look forward to celebrating at the conclusion of the year as they depart our Howard Halls at the conclusion of the school year. The board accepted the resignation for the purpose of retirement from Mr. Gene Tranquino, our 18-year veteran executive director of Technology and Transportation. Mrs. Hanley's face tells the story. No one is happy to see Gene leave our hallways, but certainly very happy for him as he will join his wife Gretchen, who retired, I think, four years ago and has been patiently waiting for him to join her on that journey. And we will certainly celebrate and recognize Gene at the June meeting. And also, the board accepted the resignation for the purpose of the retirement of a beloved 30-year veteran teacher of this building, Mrs. Wendy Blair Braxton, who has made an indelible mark on the lives of hundreds, if not thousands, of Elwood students. And we will very, very much miss all of her contributions. Oh, Mrs. Bell just held her heart in Elwood School. And we look forward to celebrating Wendy and all of her accomplishments at the end of the year as well.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. All right, that brings us up to our second residence remarks this evening. Any residents wishing to speak? Seeing.
One.
Everything I mentioned before in my blurb, please know it still stands to the second residence remarks.
I turned it off. My mistake.
All right. I don't know if we have other people who want to speak. All right, I'll sit. This is fine. No. Vehemently, no. My name is Agapie Bell, and I'm just representing myself and not any organization that I may lead. So this is always a very exciting Board of Ed meeting for me to see what the wish list is. I was excited to come to welcome Dr. Hood. I'm really excited, you know, I was sad when Dr. Hull was, heard that she was retiring, but I'm really excited that we have found someone as dynamic and amazing as Dr. Hood. So I'm very relieved and very happy for all of our children and those who are going to come through the district. So I was very excited that this was all in one evening. The wish list is always an exciting night for a parent to look at and what could be and what could happen, knowing, oh, there you go. Hello? Oh, yeah, it's different. Thanks, Sarah. So I just want to say, I think the board is already of the same mindset. The dream of freshman seminar and what it hopes, the hopes of the years past of what it could have been and frankly has never been. And then just, you know, the rever, reverting back to the. And then, just, you know, reverting back to the study hall. I have three kids, a current ninth grader and two older kids. So, I know that it is a missed opportunity, and I'm really excited and happy for the future ninth graders that, bless you, and I support all the comments as a parent of older kids of what you've said, that this is a priority space. There's a lot of things always on the wish list, but you know, I think utilizing that freshman study hall is a priority. You guys have been great. Administration has been great in the past with the class sizes and different things, but this is definitely the lagging behind just dot in the curriculum. So, I just want to voice my support for what you've already said about it, and I think that's it.
You have 45 seconds left. Do you want to talk about class size? You missed it. You missed it. Come on. I feel like it's not a board budget meeting without that. All right, we got you.
Hi, I'm not sure if I can ask this question, so I'll just put it out there.
I'm just gonna, I'm sorry.
Oh, my name, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Resident or non-resident, we know, but for those at home, thank you.
I am Bashmir Pascal Turner, and I am a resident. As I'm looking through the agenda, I saw that the step team is, well, the stipend is being decreased, and the club will no longer run after January 2nd. I'm just wondering why.
Dr. Bossert?
Yeah, Ms. Pascal. Disappointing. The step team has become a wonderful tradition at John Glenn High School and within our school community, and it was disappointing that we didn't have enough students to form a team and a club this year. The reason why the stipend was reduced is that for the first half of the year, the club advisor did everything she could to try to recruit student participation and held several organizational meetings and encouraged students and tapped shoulders in the cafeteria and everything else. But it was not an adequate number of students to have a step team or form that club. So, she, in good conscience, came forward, reported that to Mr. McNamara, and said, "I don't feel comfortable accepting payment for a club that really isn't going in the manner in which we all expect." So, what we decided is we made a difficult decision to discontinue our efforts for this year, but we will reinvigorate those efforts for next year, if not later this spring, in a way to try to cultivate greater interest in the program. You know, I had a conversation with Mr. McNamara, because we were upset by this, and in years past, we had some really dynamic students who participated, who were so talented and motivating that they were the best recruiters for the club. And as they have moved on, the students that remained didn't have that same connection with the other kids to involve other kids and have them leave their comfort zone and try something new. So, we're not abandoning the club. We're not deleting it from the budget. We are keeping that stipend existing in the budget, and we will post the position again, either in the spring if students come forward or for September.
And how many students are needed to form the club?
You know, typically, Ms. Pascal, we do have a hard and fast number, but with an initiative like this, we don't have it must meet 15, it must be 18. We were trying to be very, very flexible, but the number of students who came forward for this particular club would not have been conducive to conducting the activity.
Okay, so, I know the step team was formed, well, it's a club now, but I believe in 2001, the step team was formed at Glen. And granted, I didn't go back 22 years and speak to people for that long, but there's always been an issue with the step team, whether it be finding advisors, student interest. I'm just wondering what really is being done. And I know Ms. Valentine is, I'm sorry, no, she's Davis. Ms. Davis is a great teacher, but I'm wondering what's really being done to recruit students because there is a lot of interest of students to join the step team, the step club. But I'm always hearing, "Oh, we didn't have an advisor," or, "Oh, there wasn't enough interest." But there are students interested.
I can't speak historically, Ms. Pascal. I can just tell you that this year, there was not ample student interest to be able to function the activity. We had advisor. She had been posted. Meetings were held. Recruiting expeditions took place, and unfortunately, the numbers didn't emerge. I am committed to trying again. It may or may not be Ms. Davis who moves forward with it. We have an incoming group of freshmen that might demonstrate greater interest. We may, you know, have to recruit directly from other athletics and rob from Peter to pay Paul. We are very disappointed to not have that club this year, and we are not abandoning the club. We are just not able to conduct it this year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Bossert, Kaisi has a question.
Of course.
If interest strikes in the next week, if Ms. Pascal gets out there with posters and gets students to want to join, is there an opportunity in the spring for the club to resurrect? Or does it have to wait till the next school year to resurrect?
No, the money is in the budget. We have a stipended position allocated for it. We have multiple advisors who have expressed interest in participation. It wasn't limited to Ms. Davis only. There were other teachers who were willing to assist with recruiting and take over the club if the students required it. So, if next week, next month, three months from now, enough students come forward and say, "Can we do this?" The board will immediately get a recommendation to reappoint an advisor.
Thank you. You have to, unfortunately, have to come back up. I'm sorry. They just can't hear you at home, and you did have 45 seconds left on your time. Yep, thank you.
Dr. Bossert, what is considered enough students?
Yeah, I'm trying not purposely to give you a definitive number because I'm not the club advisor and I don't have enough knowledge of the activity to identify what that minimum requirement could be. But I assure you that the numbers of students who came forward over the last few weeks, you can count on one hand, and that just wasn't enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. I will say, Ms. Pascal, I remember graduating, having the junior prom, the prom, and my brother-in-law, like, five, six years after, they went away with the junior prom. So, things wax and wane. Students have interest, don't have interest, so hopefully, something gets kind of, you know, percolating in the current grades that they want to show interest, because there's nothing better than seeing the step team at a game with the energy, and hopefully, there are students who want to give that energy to the, you know, the community. So, hopefully, you get a poster made.
Yeah, and forgive me because I know we're at a German, but I really think it's important for the board and community. We always base co-curricular activities on student interest. There have been a number of clubs introduced over the last years that hadn't previously existed. We have a chess team. We have a gaming club. We have a sports gaming club. We have, how many other things does Mr. Kill Kenny facilitate? We have whatever that card game is that the kids play that I don't know, and not poker. And whenever a group of motivated students come forward, it's our job as leaders, and I think the building principals do this very well, of finding the correct advisor to facilitate it, supervise it, and make sure it happens. So, the board has seen a tremendous growth in co-curricular offerings, but you also see that they're fluid. There was an Ultimate Frisbee Club for a period of time because that's what the kids were into. I'm not sure that we had an Ultimate Frisbee Club this past spring, but when they come forward, we try to accommodate whenever we can. And I have to give kudos to Ms. Davis for not wanting to accept financial renumeration for something that just wasn't occurring, because what that does is it allows flexibility for something that may have increased student interest.
With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion, Mrs. Mamalito, seconded by Mr. Skrola. All in favor? Five zero. Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you for coming out and attending. Look forward to seeing you at the next meeting on January 26th.